Could you check? Okay, thank you. Mr. Austin, could you check to see if Mr. Bryant has dialed in? Because I did see that he responded to the email earlier today.
He is dialed in.
He has? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryant, can you unmute and just sound here so that it is properly recorded?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Bryant. Alright. So ladies and gentlemen, our next item on the agenda would be the moment of silence. During this moment of silence, I'd ask if you would please give consideration to those families who have suffered loss of property and person in both Louisiana and in Texas. So this and we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is to adopt our agenda as presented. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt our agenda as printed.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the agenda is adopted. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our August 19th, 2021 meeting minutes. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the August 21st, 2021 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, that this body approves our August 21st, I think, uh, August 19th. I think I heard you say 21st, Commissioner Lovett.
I did, and I can correct it to August 19th.
Okay, our August 19th minute, meeting minutes. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our August 19th, 2021 meeting minutes are adopted. Our next item on the agenda is new business. Our first case is 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 07. The applicant is Kareem Sharif. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Chairman Atkins, in reference to new business, item number one, case number 2021V dash 001 dash 07. The applicant Kareem Sharif, property located at 401 Francis Street. The applicant seeks a three-part variance for relief from lots where footage, front and rear yard setback reduction. Case type is a variance.
Okay, thank you so much Director Smith. For all of those who are attending the meeting this evening, all of our agenda items are variances. This is the final, this body is the final arbiter for all variances that come before this body. At this time, I will read our rules for public hearings. All of the agenda items will require public hearing. And commissioners, please remember to make your motions in the sound of, you do not have to make your motion in the sound of a recommendation as we are the final arbiters. As we continue to meet virtually due to COVID-19 pandemic, we are utilizing this tele-meeting platform to act upon planning and zoning cases as they come before this commission. As such, I'm asking each participant other than commissioners and staff to mute their devices. Once we get to parts of the agenda that require public input, those who have notified staff of their desire to speak will be recognized to speak. If you do not notify staff but desire to speak, please use the raise hand or chat function to be recognized. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance with Section 10-2219 of the East Point Zoning Code and Development Regulations. Public hearing rules are as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of 15 minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of 15 minutes. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the quorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse to speak of the right to continue if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of the quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard our rules for public hearing. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 07, that's 401 Francis Street.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that this bodies, that this body opens the public hearing for case number 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 07. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is our applicant present this evening, Mr. Sharif?
I'll be speaking for Kareem tonight.
Okay, would you please state your first and last name and your current address?
Yep, this is Liam Burns, and I'm at 375 Highland Avenue, Atlanta.
Complete your address, Mr. Burns. It's for our stenographer's records. It's very important.
Okay, I'm Atlanta, Georgia, 30312.
Okay, thank you. You may present your case.
So, the highlighted section is the corner lot. We're actually the next one in on the, on Francis Street there. But basically, it's an existing lot that is less than 7,500 square feet. We are requesting the variances for a smaller lot size than what is typically allowed, and then smaller setbacks to allow for an 1,800 square foot home, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath setup.
Okay. Is that the conclusion of your presentation, Mr. Burns?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, it's not a dialogue during the pro, during the public hearing, this is the commission's opportunity to hear from the public. So if there's anything that you would like for the commission to know in consideration of your case, this is your opportunity to do that. And so you will only be asked questions should a commissioner feel that they have a question to ask you. So during this process, you're to present everything you'd like for the commission to know. So this is conclude your presentation.
I just wanna, wanted to be clear that this is already an existing lot that is less than the 7,500 square feet. That's the reason we're requesting the variance in the first place. And like I said, the traditional setback limits, you would not be able to build pretty much any size house on this lot using those setbacks. So that's the reason for the second and third variance request for the smaller setback limits. That's everything.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor? We may have to mute others. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning case? Hearing none, seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Okay, I just see a chat here. Director Smith, you saying, you're saying that there is someone who would like to speak, is that correct? You're on mute?
I was sending a chat to the only other attendee, which is Sarah Epstein, asking if she would like to speak.
Okay. Let us know the response if you get that.
Tony, are you able to unmute her and see and ask her?
Yes, Miss Epstein.
Hi. No, I, it's not necessary. I was just attending for interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Epstein. Alright, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Hearing none, seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Phil, so this body closes the public hearing. That this body closes the public hearing for case number 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 07. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, all opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2021V, and as invictus dash 001 dash 07, located at 401 Francis Street. The applicant is Kareem Sharif. Property is currently zoned R1A Urban Residential. The applicant seeks a three-part variance to reduce lot size from 7,500 square feet to 4,664 square feet, to reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 14 feet, and to reduce rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet. As stated, the property is currently zoned R1A Urban Residential. As stated by the applicant and by staff, in previous cases, the R1A zoning district does prevent a hardship for most of the new developments coming into the city. As it will, most of the lots do not meet current zoning standards. Property is zoned, is currently within the redevelopment neighborhood, future land use designation. And on the screen is just a property summary showing what the current square footage of the property is. Again, 4,664 square feet. And there are site photos on the screen for those can see the screen. The bigger photo on the left is where the site is. It is a vacant lot. And the pictures to the right of this are the surrounding properties. The applicant has provided a site plan and floor plans for what they are proposing in that area. And staff does recommend approval for the requested variances to reduce lot size from 7,500 square feet to 4,664 square feet, to reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 14 feet, and to reduce rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant's representative, Mr. Burns. We've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Tucker Todd.
I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Fields, okay? And Commissioner Tucker Todd, is your motion to approve with the conditions as stated by staff?
So the three that are on there now, uh, those are
Oh, there are no
Not just, just reiterating?
Yes.
They're not conditions. Okay, yes, sir, the, so my, my motion would stand.
Yes, okay, thank you. So Commissioner Tucker Todd has made the motion to approve the three-part variance to reduce the lot size setback, the lot size from 7,500 square feet to 4,664 square feet, to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 14 feet, and to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Phil. Commissioners, are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, this is a question I probably should have asked previously. But the changes to, may I speak, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I'm sorry, the, the changes that we are looking at, will that change? Is that a permanent change in, in the, the square footage and the lot size for future sites or construction?
If I understand, and, and let me know if I understand your, your question correctly, Commissioner Lovett. For the very first part of the variance, the reason that the applicant is requesting the lot size, the lot size reduction is because the lot size is already recorded and is already 4,664 square feet. So it cannot reach the 7,500 square feet. And I believe that based on that and where the other properties are positioned in proximity to that, the setbacks would then mirror or conform to those things that are currently adjacent to that property. Staff, or is that correct in terms of the other properties as it relates to the 14 feet setback for the front yard and the 15 feet setback for the rear?
Yes, that's correct. This variance is specific to this parcel, and it does not impact any other parcel. The applicant, the application is very specific to this address and this specific parcel. And the setbacks are from the property lines of this particular parcel.
So this does not require any changes to our existing ordinances, does it?
No, it does not.
It does not.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Right, and that is, and Commissioner Lovett, that is actually why they had to come before us. Because we will not change our ordinance for this, but what we're doing is we're allowing them to vary from the ordinance, so that they will be able to build on the lot.
Thank you. And you said previously, I mean, there was a house on this lot previously, is that right?
At some point, yes.
And it had the same setbacks and the same square footage?
That, we don't know if what the, at that time, when the house was built, or what the ordinance was at that time. At this time, the property does not meet the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lovett. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns from the commission? Okay, commissioners, there is currently a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Tucker Todd that this body approves the three-part variance for 401 Francis Street. And that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Phil. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body approves the variance request for 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 07. Our next agenda item is 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 08. The applicant is also Mr. Kareem Sharif. Applicant, property address is 1846 Ferris Street. Staff, would you please sound the caption?
Chairman Atkins, in reference to new business, item number two, case number 2021V dash 001 dash 08, the applicant Kareem Sharif, property located at 1846 Ferris Avenue. Applicant seeks variance to reduce lot square footage from 7,500 square feet to 5,575 square feet. Case type is a variance.
Thank you. This item also, as I stated before, requires a public hearing. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Motion to open the public hearing on case number 2021V dash 001 dash 08, 1846 Ferris Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner, I heard McKnight, I know for sure. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is Mr. Sharif present?
I'll also be speaking for Kareem on this case as well.
Okay, would you please again state your first and last name and your current address?
This is Liam Burns. I am at 375 Highland Avenue, Atlanta, Georgia, 30312.
Okay, Mr. Burns, you may present the case.
Okay, the, there's only one variance request for this case. It is an existing lot that falls under the 7,500 square foot lot size. This lot size is currently 5,575 square feet. We need, that's the only change that we need, or the variance that we're asking for. The plan is to build another three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath on this lot.
Okay. That concludes your presentation. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Hearing none, seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning application? Any opponents here to speak against? Hearing none, seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Phil, that this body closes the public hearing for case number 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 08. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2021V is invictus dash 001 dash 08, located at 1846 Ferris Avenue. The applicant is Kareem Sharif. Zoning is R1A Urban Residential, and the applicant seeks to reduce, seeks a variance to reduce lot size from 7,000, 7,500 square feet per city ordinance to 5,575 square feet. As stated, the property is zoned R1A and is within the redevelopment neighborhood, future land use designation. And this is just a property summary from Fulton County showing that square footage is 5,575 square feet, showing that the property does not meet the current city ordinance requirement of 7,500 square feet. The applicant has provided the site plan showing their proposed development. And staff does recommend approval for the request to reduce lot size from 7,500 square feet to 5,575 square feet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Austin. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant's representative. We also have heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve
Okay.
this request.
Okay, Commissioner Phil, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Phil, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body approves the variance request for 1846 Ferris Avenue. And that is case number 2021 vis invictus dash 001 dash 08. The request is to reduce the lot size from 7,500 square feet to 5,575 square feet. Commissioners, are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, again, the motion is made by Commissioner Phil to approve, and seconded by Commissioner Lovett. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the body approves the variance request. Next item on the agenda is 2021 vis vis invictus dash 002 dash 07. The application address is 3049 Stone Road. The applicant is Steve Rothman. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Chairman Atkins, in reference to new business, item number three, case number 2021V dash 002 dash 07, applicant is Steve Rothman. Property is located at 3049 Stone Road. Applicant seeks variance to reduce setbacks, landscape buffers, and orientation of the homes. Case type is a variance.
Okay, thank you, Director Smith. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number 2021 vis invictus dash 002 dash 07.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKnight, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body opens the public hearing for case number 2021 vis invictus dash 002 dash 07. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Rothman, are you present?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Please state your first and last name and your current address.
Thank you. I'm Steve Rothman, R O T H M A N, 2849 Paces Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30339. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I represent, in this case, Brad Hughes is what he is on the panel, but he's Rock Haven Homes, technically. And it's a development, or, or the proposal here is a development on Stone Road that has already commenced. It commenced about a decade ago, and it was for a 32-lot subdivision. That development commenced, but then it stopped suddenly with the crash. Some more work has been done in the interim to try to maintain the site, but the fact is that the roads were put in. The detention pond was partially built. Sewers and sewer and water was put in, other infrastructure was put in, the home locations were set, but the homes were not built, but the sewer and water lines are, are run to the homes. In the interim, since the development stopped, two things happened. One is the kudzu kept growing. The water came and the, and the storm and silt water kept flowing, and the detention pond was not performing. The second thing that happened was that that developer was fired. And then my client here, who was not the developer before, now proposes to get this accomplished. The third thing that happened is that the city changed its unified development code or its zoning ordinance. And so as a result of that, there are some new regulations, different kinds of regulations, different wordings. And so this applicant, these variances are sought, not because he's trying to change the plan that was approved before, but just to implement the plan that was done before. So we're not asking for extra lots. He's not trying to get something extra. He wants to build, build what was approved about a decade ago. And so to do that, we need the four variances. Just as an example, there's a landscape strip that's now required along Stone Road. But because of topography that falls off from Stone Road, it's a 25-foot landscape strip, but there's just not that much room. You've got an eight-to-30-foot drop, about 10 feet off of Stone Road. So we'd ask to reduce the landscape strip from 25 feet to 10, because at that point, it becomes air. And, and so I think with that, we went over it in briefing. We've had some good conversations with community members, including last night, we met with some others. And so I will say, to the extent there's members of the public there, you know, we agree with the staff's recommendation. Mr. Hughes will be submitting a hydrology study with this proposal, which is what staff is requiring. He's going to actually fix the detention pond, get the silt out, stop that silt from flowing, correct the rainwater problems, and remove a lot of that kudzu and just make it the, the subdivision that was originally planned. And I'll just, I'll just end with, Mr. Hughes is a guy that came in front of this commission about a year and three months ago with a similar kind of application for a partially-built subdivision on Stanton Road. I was surprised to see when I drove out there about a month ago, that subdivision is already finished. In other words, Mr. Hughes isn't trying to piece something together. He's got the pipeline. He's ready to go. We can fix the problem out there, and so we'd, we'd ask for your support. And to the extent I can reserve my time if there's concerns, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Commissioners, hearing none and seeing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 2021 vis invictus dash 002 dash 07.
Still move?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body closes the public hearing for 2021 vis invictus dash 002 dash 07. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2021V dash 002 dash 01, located at 3049 Stone Road. The applicant is Steve Rothman. The zoning is currently a single-family dwelling, R1. The applicant seeks a four-part variance request. The applicant seeks request to reduce 25-foot landscape strip to 10 feet, to reduce variance from 10-foot understood buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to be waived, and request relief from Section 10 dash 2061 to reduce the front yard setback for the following lots. Lots 1 through 4, reduce setback from 45 feet to 29.5 feet. Lot 6 to 7, reduce setback from 45 feet to 35 feet. Lot 8 to 9, to reduce setback from 45 feet to 20 feet. Lot 10, to reduce setback from 45 feet to 21.6 feet. Lots 11 to 23, to reduce setback from 45 feet to 20 feet. Last 24 to 32, request relief from Section 10 dash 2020 to allow homes' orientation to face towards internal streets. As stated, the property is within the R1 Single Family Residential zoning designation, and is within the suburban residential future land use designation. As provided, the applicant has provided the site plan, which can be seen on the screen. And the site plan also delineates which lots will have, which are proposed to have, which, which lots are supposed to have, which reductions. And the site plan also delineates which lots will have, which, um, are proposed to have, which, which, which lots are supposed to have, which reductions. And staff recommends the following for the applicant's variance request with the following conditions. The hydrology report be submitted with application for building permit to be reviewed by water and sewer department prior to issuance of any building permits. If approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, applicant will need to provide sets of plans to send to the Soil and Water, um, committee for their review and approval to start the LDP process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Austin. Um, commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, Mr. Rothman, and we've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Tucker Todd.
I would make a motion to approve with the staff's, um, conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that this body approves the requested variances as stated. For lots one through four, reduction front setback from forty-five to twenty-nine point five feet. For lot six through seven, reduction front setback from forty-five feet to thirty-five feet. Lots eight through nine, reduction front setback from forty-five feet to twenty feet. Lot ten, reduction front setback from forty-five feet to eighteen point four feet. Lots eleven through twenty-three, reduction front setback from forty-five feet to twenty feet. Lots twenty-four to thirty-two, reduction setback from forty-five feet to fifteen feet. And to treat frontage along Stone Road as rear property line, with the two conditions as stated by staff. That motion to approve was made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner McKnight. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns, commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This body approves the various requests, Mr. Rothman. We've now come to the item on the agenda for announcement. Staff, do you have any announcements that's good for the body?
Just wanted to let you all know that we checked in with the office manag, manager as well as the finance department. And in reference to the stipends, they will be mailed out on September twenty-second.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Smith. Um, I have no announcements from the commission. Commissioners, do you all have any announcements that's good for the body? Hearing none, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
By Commissioner Love it, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that this body adjourns our regularly scheduled September meeting. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much for a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Good evening.